It is a budget work session, so I'd like to call that to order. And if everyone could stand and say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome John Biscardin. He was sworn in last night to the committee. So with that, Lorraine, if you could call the roll.
Linda Abenzado.
Here.
Melvoid Benson.
John Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
William Mudge.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Richard Welsh.
Here.
Julia Hald.
Here.
Student representative. Thank you.
All right, our main thing on the agenda tonight, as this is a budget meeting, is the 2012-2013 budget. So I am going to turn this meeting over right away to Dr. Ojai.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. This is perhaps the most difficult part of my job and the job of the people who work up here, and that is putting together a workable budget for our school department. It comes with a lot of challenges. It's no secret to anyone in the room tonight or in our community how difficult our economy is as of late, and it is presenting a lot of concerns for us as individuals and for municipalities, and particularly tonight for school departments. North Kingstown's no exception. We've had a number of ongoing issues, and I noticed from the people who have come out tonight, and I appreciate you coming out, that, you know, I know the people in the room are pretty aware of the kinds of things that we are facing. What I want to do right now is just talk to you a little bit about, you know, some of the general guidelines for tonight. In two weeks from now, I will come back with some specific lists of the types of things I would like to do with this budget, but for now, I want to kind of give a broad, sweeping indication of what I am looking to propose. In some cases, I've been doing a lot of work on this, particularly with my administrative staff and Mr. Draper, and have found some areas that I think may work out in terms of cuts, and quite frankly, in some areas, I don't quite know yet, and I'm going to need those two weeks to continue to look at this and make sure that I'm doing the responsible thing by this district to choose things that are prudent and responsible and make sure that we put a quality product in front of our students. As I indicated in a letter that I forwarded to the community yesterday, we are looking at if the numbers stay as has been indicated to us by the town manager, a budget shortfall of $1.6 million for next year, if things were to stay pretty much the same as they currently are, with the current services, the current staff, and so on. That is kind of an unlikely scenario all by itself, because the number that has been given to us, from what I am learning in this process, it kind of starts high and works from there. So tomorrow, I will be meeting with the town manager and the head of the town council, and the head of the school committee will be joining us, and we will be talking about, you know, what their feeling is right now. Obviously, that's a number that ultimately gets voted on by the town council, but they need to give us an indication of what is the actual number that we're looking at. My sense of things is that this $1.6 million number is dependent on a 4% increase. That is highly unlikely, particularly given that that doesn't happen too often, particularly given that the town is in its own financial straits at the moment, and they're not looking at any silver rainbow on the horizon in terms of cash infusion coming to them. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, there's a large feeling out there in all communities that people are feeling stretched out and overtaxed as it is. So the idea of a tax increase with the majority of that coming to the school department is a little hard to believe at the moment. But for now, because the number I have is 1.6 million, that's the number I'm looking When I look at that, I don't see any easy items. Sometimes you'll say, is there any low-hanging fruit? Is there anything that you can easily find? Just this year, just a few months ago, I came to this committee and asked for increases in paraprofessionals and in teachers, because we could not do without them, and I still feel the same way. If I felt that we could transfer a teacher or a paraprofessional to the spot that we needed the person, I would have done it, but I couldn't find a way to do that. I consulted with a lot of people and tried to work on some creative solutions. So to say that I see an easy place to find several staff members to cut is just not a reality. I don't have that kind of a solution. So as I move forward with this, I need to let all of you know that one of, you know, and I'm going to start with two of the most difficult topics that has been in front of this committee. This committee has talked about this for some time now, and that is outsourcing of custodial staff and cafeteria staff. These are not pleasant kinds of ideas. I don't think there's anybody on this committee that that's their first solution, and I think you can see from the people on this committee that there's been a lot of resistance to doing that sort of thing for some years now. We are at a point right now that we have a pretty approximate estimate of approximately $400,000 that can be saved by custodial outsourcing. There are other areas where the school committee, before I was even superintendent, have looked into outsourcing, one of them mainly buses. The committee looked into that and found that there wasn't that kind of a savings and decided to keep the bus service as it is. In this case, $400,000 is huge, especially since it's a number that would continue to recur and maybe even grow as years move on. It is impossible, in my opinion, to say no to something like that if there is not some other kind of solution that can find that kind of money, and I don't believe there is, and I believe people have sincerely tried on both sides. So that will likely be on my list. That's something that we need to do. Our cafeteria is a tremendous organization as well, as is our custodians, and they have done tremendous work. Just today, I was at a presentation where Congressman Langvin was at a North Kingstown school to praise the work of Trish Colley and the cafeteria staff for the healthy food that they put in front of our students. I was enormously proud by that, and I suspect everyone on the committee is as well. So doing things like this are difficult. However, what wasn't said today was that in the past few years, there has been a gap of roughly $150,000 that has been in deficit for our cafeteria services, that we have not been able to take care of, and trying, you know, in some ways, we've made up some of it, but we're not going to come close, to breaking even. In budgetary times like this, where 1.6 million is the good number, it is incredibly difficult, if not impossible, to say no to exploring options for outsourcing of cafeteria. As I think everybody in the room probably knows, we are the only district in the state of Rhode Island that does not do that, and I think, and I know, that the reason for that is, is that there's a lot of financial savings to be gained. So it is something that I feel I have a responsibility to include as a cut in this budget. It's not something that I take lightly. I've been thinking about this long and hard over several months. For other areas, you know, even those items, that doesn't even get us halfway, just the 1.6. Now, every percentage point, let's say the town comes back to us and says, okay, instead of 4%, we'll make it 2%, every percentage point is approximately $400,000. So if the number is a 2% number ultimately, once we get to May, that means we're looking at 2.4 million. In October, I came in front of the town council and the school committee and a pretty packed house at the Beechwood Center and talked about how I could possibly get to 2.7 million. And as you recall, that list was pretty extensive and included lots of items near and dear to my heart, not only as a superintendent, but as a parent and as a citizen of North Kingstown myself, and I know near and dear to everybody else's hearts. After I sent my letter out yesterday, by the way, I've gotten some responses, and I really appreciate that, people getting involved and letting me know and letting school committee members and town council people know how they feel. It's important. This is your budget. It's our budget, and we all need to know how you feel. But one of the comments had to do with, you know, I'm tired of people always pointing to sports and music and making what, I don't think the word was empty threat, but something to that effect, that it's kind of a scare tactic. I don't mean to do that. That is not my intention in putting a letter out to the community and saying that in October and saying it again now. Our budget is approximately $58 million. Most of that budget, maybe 46 million of it, is items that I pretty much cannot touch, even if I wanted to. Contracts that have already been signed, healthcare numbers, if the health insurance number goes up, we have to pay it. Mandates from the state. I cannot tell a kid that I'm not going to teach you math and take away your math class. I can't tell them I'm not going to teach you how to read. I can't tell them I'm not going to teach you social studies this week. Those things are mandatory. There's only so much in the curriculum in terms of elective items that I can even look at in terms of a student's curriculum. So when you get down to it, there's really about $12 million that I have any discretion over at all. I've gotten a really good education in this in the last few months, and it makes it very difficult to find those areas. And within those areas, for instance, our sports program is about half a million dollars that this district spends on sports. So, you know, that's a pretty sizable percentage of that money that I can even look at to make other measures at this point. It's very difficult, and I haven't gotten there yet, but I don't see it as an easy solution to come out of this without affecting our sports program. Our music program is also a sizable item. Now, a lot of that is teachers teaching classes, so kids have to be in seven classes, say, at the high school. One of them is music. It really doesn't cost us anything, because if I reduce a part of that music program at the high school, the student's going to take another class. There's still going to be a teacher who's getting paid in front of that student. But there's a lot of extracurricular pieces to music. There's a lot of extracurricular pieces to art and drama, and again, those are things that my own kids are a part of, so it breaks my heart to even bring those subjects up. I'm a musician myself, and I would hate to do something like that. So, you know, to look at this is not easy, and what it needs is this community to come together and let our elected officials know what is most important to you. I can do that from the stage, but I need the people in the community to let our elected officials know that. You know, I think the members of the school committee, they hear it all the time. They, you know, they are on the school committee, and they get mailed quite often and emailed, and people let them know what's important to them. I think we need to do the same thing with the town council. They need, you know, they hear a lot about municipal programs, maybe not so much about the schools. The schools are the major part of the spending of the town. The town council owns the schools just as much as the school committee does. It's all of our responsibility, and you get what you demand. If we all demand it together, we'll get what we need, but it's going to take that kind of an effort. So as I look to the remaining money, which could be anywhere from another million dollars or so, or even closer to two, I need to look at any viable reduction I can find for teachers, paraprofessionals, clerical staff. I need to, we did this last year, we reduced the number of sections at the high school. I need to do that again. I'm not even sure if I can. I have Dr. Kenworthy working on, you know, what could possibly be done if I take elective classes and I move the minimum enrollment up. So if we automatically run an elective class at 16 kids, let's make it 18 or 19 and see what happens. That ultimately means there are more kids stuffed into each class. That is not ideal, but that's the best we can do. That's not, you know, that will save other things. You all know me as the assistant superintendent and how important I think professional development is. I plan on reductions in professional development. That's what we do. We develop ourselves professionally so we can put the best product in front of our kids, teach them the best that we can. I'm proposing cuts in professional development. That's very difficult to do. I suspect, I know, that that won't get me there. As much as I can drop from those areas will not get me there, so I'm going to need to go further than that. So I don't know how deep I would have to look at after-school academic support programs, like the ARC that we have at our school. We have, I mean, at the high school, and we also have similar after-school support programs for kids who are behind at the two middle schools. Those are essential. You know, we do a good job in this district academically. I've been in front of this committee several times in the past two years talking about our test scores. Generally, the test scores for North Kingstown run somewhere in the top 10 in the state, and recently, we received news that our eighth grade science is second in the state. Our SAT scores at the high school are third in the state. We received commendations from the college board for being the only high school in the state of Rhode Island that have significantly increased their AP test takers, and their scores went up at the same time. That is huge. That is tremendous stuff. So we're doing good things, and we need the current program we have now in place to make those things happen, but we won't be able to. Even with the best intentions, and I take it that the town council has the best intentions, and they mean well, even with the best intentions coming from the town manager and the town council, we're going to have a hard time, and we're going to have to make very, very difficult decisions. While I talk about that, as challenging as all that is, I feel like following up on that, I need more than what we have now, because, you know, we're closely looking because of the auditing work that we're doing, we're looking at the BEP, the Basic Educational Program, given to us from the state, and it's been a good exercise for us at budget time, because the state tells us, this is what a school department needs to have for its basic essentials. It talks about how you're supposed to support kids socially in your school system. Right now, for 4,500 students approximately, we have two social workers, and we also have a town with the second highest population of students who are homeless, who live in sheltered community here in North Kingstown. We have two social workers for that community, like districts to us have several more. It is not right that we only have two. We need more help. When I go to elementary schools, the elementary teachers tell me if we could have one thing, we would need more support for our kids who are behind in reading and math. Every educator knows, the statistics will show you, if you support kids who are behind adequately at the elementary level, they're probably going to do better all the way through. They've got to know how to read and write and do basic math well by third or fourth grade. Otherwise, you may lose them forever. We have supports, people like reading specialists at the elementary level, but not nearly enough. They have loads of kids where they're seeing, these kids are not reading to grade level, and they can't get to them because they're too busy. They're busy with other students. They're busy attending meetings with parents of those students, making plans for how they're going to do what we call RTI, Response to Intervention. Basically, what that means is setting up interventions to help a kid get to reading at grade level or get to math at grade level. Those things are vitally important. I call it a moral imperative. We need to do that, and we're not doing a good enough job right now, so we need to do better. We need, we have a preschool cohort currently right now with a great deal of special needs. You know, when Rachel Santa talks to me about these details, I'm blown away, and these kids obviously are going to be in our program for a long time. They're in preschool right now, everybody. So we have to be thinking of that. Those are mandatory items. Student has an IEP and they need special services, we can't say no to that. By law, we cannot say no. We have to make room for those kinds of things. So that's, you know, the second grouping of things that I'm thinking about. While I'm thinking, how am I going to make the cuts to get to 1.6 million and probably more than that, how do I actually add things that we vitally need while doing that? Obviously, you need to cut even more. The last factor is our capital reserve fund. This, we've had battles on this stage in the last few months over putting a bond for, with the highlighted item is the Davisville Middle School roof that is in desperate need of repair, and what gets lost in that bond is a lot of other schools that have HVAC systems that are in desperate need of repair, and handicap ramps, and counters where a handicapped person can, you know, use it appropriately. Those are things that are required of us. They're mandatory. We need to do them eventually, and so we put together a bond to get this done, and quite frankly, who is in the mood to approve a bond right now? We just talked about the economic times that we're living in, $6.4 million. Now, I hope that we do approve it, because we get a 30%, you know, cut from the state to help us afford it, whereas if we do it on our own, which we have to do anyway, it's going to be 100%. So I hope that we do that. But the better way to do that is to have a capital reserve fund that every year gets funded appropriately. When this was designed, I'm told, years ago, the whole idea was that roughly half a million dollars would go into this every year, and we wouldn't have to go out to a bond all the time. And, okay, you save up a little bit, and when a roof comes along, or when an HVAC system comes along, or when we need air conditioning at the high school because our kids are roasting in the month of June, then we can do something about it. We have no money in that account, very little. I've been told by Dr. Kenworthy that we have television sets in the high school right now that are failing. They're 10 years old, a little, about the same, you know, length as the high school. They've been here for a long time, and so I don't quite know, with a budget deficit right now, how I'm going to get a couple of thousand dollars to put some new TVs in at the moment, but much less, see, it shouldn't be like that. It should be that I have a capital reserve fund for those kinds of things, and that there's a plan that every year, certain buildings are on that plan, and we address them as, before they become emergencies, before we have to have a study by SMMA telling us that we're in danger of imminent failure for a roof. We should have fixed that years ago, but now we're struggling, and we don't even know if we're going to get the money. There should be money set aside all the time. That's hard to do, particularly in a year like this, when we can't even find the basic budget, not to mention the capital budget. So we, you know, we have needs. We have very, you know, this is very desperate, and it's extremely challenging. Our climate, the economic climate, is depleted of funds, so I don't think there's anybody on this stage, or anybody at the town council, or anybody, period, who knows how to make this happen easily. We have to be creative. We have to be courageous about it, and when we feel important about something, we need to say it, and that's the people on this stage, and that's the people in the audience, and that's the people all over our community. We need to be respectful with one another. Nobody wants to cut things. Nobody wants to hurt other people in doing this, so we have to be very careful about that and respect one another. So it's going to be a difficult season, everybody, and I hope that we understand one another and can work with one another and communicate with one another. I invite you to come to my office anytime you feel like you need to talk, and that means anybody, and throw ideas by me, throw ideas by the people on this stage, talk to members of the town council and Mr. Embry about the way you feel, and if there's something near and dear to your heart and something that you feel is vitally important to this community and we can't do without it, you've got to let us know, because it's my experience just in two and a half years of being on this stage, that when people come to that microphone, the people on the stage tend to listen. So you've got to do that. It's, I just want you to know that, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to make the appropriate cuts, and I will communicate with you, I'll communicate with the committee, I'll work with anybody to find some creative solutions. And what I'd like to do right now is I thank you for listening, and I want to ask Mr. Draper if he could kind of talk about some of the detailed numbers that we have to deal with right now and, you know, as we move along into the near future.
I think I'll just do a, to start, if everybody has their budget book, we'll just go to the notes and assumptions section, which covers a lot of the issues we're dealing with. I'd also note that the budget is posted in the administration section of the website in the budget section of the business office.
Page four, for anybody who has a budget book.
Yeah, page four. Speaking to enrollment, we are anticipating a decline in enrollment, roughly 100 students, based on the projections that we have available to us right now. This is a statewide trend. In fact, North Kingstown, as compared to many other districts in the state, is actually losing fewer students than most. We have income at a 4% increase with the town, and as Dr. Ojai noted, that is something that remains to be seen. Jamestown tuitions have been estimated lower than the current year. State of Rhode Island income has been based upon the advice we're receiving from the state that is updated from time to time, and that'll be something that changes up right through the end of June, when the legislature makes its final actions. Medicaid reimbursement is also estimated to go down by about $125,000, that's based on the current reimbursements we're seeing now, as well as a decrease in the federal Salary and benefits, as we go into the expenditure side of the books, salary and expenditures for benefits are the lion's share of what we have. 84% of our spending is locked up in these items. As the committee and the public is aware, the bulk of this is covered by contracts. Those contracts are negotiated. At present, we are in the negotiation phase with the support union, and the outcome of that will impact this budget. Retirement contributions are based upon the pension reform that was enacted this year. Those rates are subject to change depending on actuarial results. We await word from the state as to what's going to happen. The information that's covered and the rest of that, I won't bother to go through everything that's listed here. I will drop down, actually, on page five, number six. What we've attempted to do is distribute costs on a per pupil basis, more so than we have in the past. The idea behind this is to Uh, the idea behind this is to make it equitable amongst all the schools as to what resources they're receiving. And general supplies, number seven, uh, that's also on a per pupil basis and that follows the, uh, process we were using in the past. We go over to page seven. That's a good, uh, graphic to kinda go, dig into, the round numbers, dealing with the number of staff, uh, how much funding we're receiving from local resources, uh, how much we anticipate from grant funding and federal funds. Uh, if you look in the upper left corner, uh, fiscal year 2011, we anticipated $4.2 million in restricted revenues. This year and next year, that number drops down to roughly $3 million. Um, also, as Dr. Rogé mentioned earlier, the fiscal year 2013 number includes a half million dollars in capital reserve funding, uh, which, again, looks like it's going to be a challenge to receive that level. Round, round numbers, that works out to about a 3.2% increase in spending.
I wanna thank Mr. Draper for his comments and, and just make one point before I pass it back to you, Mrs. Page. One of the points that Mr. Draper made is that we will, we, we are anticipating a, a decrease in our enrollment. And, and it's, it's not a major decrease, but it is a decrease. And, and I think that sometimes there's an assumption that, well, you just kinda take a formula where you take the per pupil and reduce everything and, and you should be just fine, that you should be able to make your budget just as easily. Unfortunately, it doesn't quite work that way. A lot of times, you might even have, uh, 50 students or so that are reduced, but it's one from this class over here in this school and it's one from this class over here in that school. And it's not like all of a sudden, you don't need that teacher anymore. This, uh, teacher last year had, uh, 25 or so students in the class. This year, it's 24. I don't need a few, a, a one less teacher. And I don't necessarily need one less paraprofessional. I don't need less cafeteria services. I don't need a less, uh, one less janitor or, or anything of the sort. I still need pretty much everything I needed before. So, you need a little bit more in terms of substantial kinds of numbers. The kinds of, uh, the report that I'm gonna provide to you will look very closely at the, what we anticipate for the level for each class at every elementary school and at the middles and the high school. And look very closely at, you know, the numbers of teachers and paraprofessionals and so on that I, that we will need. So, I, I want, you know, obviously, uh, I want you to know that I'm gonna look very closely and every time I feel that we can, we can possibly do with less, that's what we're gonna do because there's just no other solution. So, that concludes, um, our report and I'll pass it along back to you, Mrs. Page. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I start taking questions, um, Mr. Draper, in the past, I know that people could come and get a hard copy from your office. Will it be that they can get this on the website or would it be that you would give out hard copies?
It's on the website now. If you go to, um, yeah, the best way is via the website, obviously. It reduces the printing costs. It's accessible anytime. Uh, if you go to business office, um, there's a budget link in the left-hand side. Click on that and at the top, it'll be, um, the FY13 preliminary budget.
Yes, and I, and as you said, we would encourage people to go and download their own copy, um, rather than asking us to print you out a copy, although if you don't have a printer, yes, we would.
Yeah, we, we will have copies at the business office.
There is also, on the front page of the website, there is a virtual suggestion box, um, on the front page, down at the bottom left-hand quarter of the NKSD.net site. So, that's just a reminder to everyone that's been on there quite a while. Every once in a while, we have received, um, somebody who, who gives a suggestion and they have been good suggestions in the past, so we appreciate those. Uh, Mr. Sri C, see your hand up. One of the things I, I am gonna say is that, um, um, we're gonna go, we can go up and down the row to take questions. I am going to, um, keep people to a three-minute, um, minimum. And then, if we see at that end that we have everybody through and there are still more people who ask, who need to ask questions, we can revisit if we'd like to go back again. So, Mr. Sri C, you're first.
Never mind, I'll defer my time.
Mr. Alt?
Yes, I'd, I'd just like to say that, at the, um, town council meeting on the, the budget last year, which was highly attended by the community, um, there were many people that spoke against our budget, including some members that were on this committee. And then, when the cuts came, came down, when we didn't have the money to fund the budget that we had proposed, uh, we had a full audience in one of our school committee meetings and people were complaining about these cuts. Once the die has been cast at the town council level, once they have told us what our bottom line is, we have no choice but to make cuts that maybe we don't agree with. So, I'd, I'd like to remind people, it's important to attend the town council meeting during budget time and speak up and support your school system. Thank you.
Someone else like to, um, go next? Mr. Draper, I have one or two questions. On your page number six, we have general supplies. One of the things you have there is $5 per pupil music for the middle and $7 per pupil at the high school. Is that different? I mean, I guess my first question should be, you don't have art in there, you don't have PE, some of the other specials, so could you explain the, the, the $5 and $7?
Yeah, that's, um, that's actually specific to North Kingston. What had happened in, um, budgets about two years ago, I had done the per pupil, uh, rates and excluded music. And music was specifically run through the curriculum office. Uh, it was handled as a separate item before, uh, before Dr. Rogé was here, I believe, before Dr. Thornton was here. Uh, what happened is after that happened, there was a lot of feedback, obviously, from the music teachers when they went to look for their money and it wasn't available. So, what we did is we changed our, our management practice so that those teachers will see their principal for the funding, however, will designate it separately as a supply item that the principal manages. Um, so that's the reason it was designated, is so that it's clarified that music money is set aside. That does not mean if the principal has issues with art or other curriculum, uh, things that may come down from the assistant superintendent, that they won't move that money to that, that purpose because supplies can be moved based upon the need of the school. But that's where it's designated initially, to cover that need.
So, is that, um, something that even if a student doesn't take music, that, I mean, at the high school, um, they would still have the designation of the $7 per pupil, even if they didn't take a music class?
Correct. It's based on the total population of the school, not based on enrollment in a particular program.
Anybody else have, um, questions or a comment? All right, hearing no other questions or comments. Um, now, we have, today is a budget meeting and then on the 17th, we have a regular meeting. But then, on the 22nd, no, 24th, um, thank you, we have another budget meeting. Um, we also have two budget meetings in February. So, this isn't the only time this will be discussed. And as Dr. Rogé said, at the next meeting, uh, the next budget meeting, he will be giving some of his proposals for places to, to, um, have further cuts, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if there's no other comments by the committee, right now, we have a budget update for the
Uh, yes, as, as the committee is aware, um, last month, as a result of negotiations and also as a result of our, uh, current situation with anticipated revenues, we declared a budget, um, deficit. Uh, when we did that, there were some points of clarification that we need to, uh, have with the town. Uh, specific to that is the level of revenues that we're going to receive. Uh, we also have some clarifications, um, to make on, over the next few months on expenses on the support union. Um, if we do reach an agreement, what will the impact be? Uh, that deficit is based upon continuing on at our current contract, not undergoing a new contract. Uh, so for that reason, we did that. This month, we're looking to make up a little bit of ground. There are some Hurricane Irene, um, expenses that appear to be reimbursed. Uh, it's not, it's not very much, it's a little less than $10,000, but it, it helps. Uh, we have implemented a freeze, so as each month progresses, we're trying to see some savings in different areas. Uh, as we're all aware, it's been a mild, uh, early winter. We're hoping that that continues. So, between the weather and the lack of snow, uh, we're hoping to make up some ground in those areas as well. As we're able to close down purchase orders or deny requisitions, that also gets us closer to our goal.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, um, for Mr. Draper or Dr. Rogé on the 2011, 2012 Dr. Rogé, we haven't heard anything back from the auditor as our response that we had to give on.
No, uh, we have not. We, we, um, part of the process and, and, after the deficit was, um, I don't know if the word declared is, uh, projected, um, was put out there, the town council solicited, uh, what they're calling a, a BEP examination or a BEP audit, basically looking at our basic educational program and looking to see that what we're doing is in compliance with that and, and, um, seeing if there are opportunities for cost savings within that. Um, it is my feeling in doing this report, uh, that we will be providing to this auditing group very soon, probably as early as tomorrow, that, uh, we not only are, are, uh, you know, meeting, uh, the BEP, but in some areas that we need more. Uh, for instance, the issue that I talked to you about with social workers, um, the BEP says that, you know, we need to do this adequately. I don't feel like we're doing it adequately right now. The problem with the, the basic education program, this used to be written in such a way that it would specify numbers. For instance, it would say if you have a, for every thousand students you have, you need a library. Um, that is no longer the case. The current BEP, as it stands now, says you need library services. That could mean a full-time librarian at every school or it could mean something different from that, as long as kids are receiving library services. So, there's a lot of, um, room for interpretation, uh, about that. So, that, that process will probably not be all that easy. And I would imagine, once it comes out, there'll be some, uh, people who have differing opinions in mind about, um, about how that works. So, it'll be interesting to see, um, what this auditing firm does with that. Uh, we have a plan that has gone to the auditor general, um, that I feel, um, is a responsible plan to get us back, um, into a point where we're not projecting a deficit anymore. Um, part of that calls for, um, the town to acknowledge that, um, we had an appropriation of $58 million and that is the appropriation regardless of how the actual revenues come in. Uh, we, as Mr. Draper pointed out, there were some differences in the revenues. These revenues were projected this time last year. Uh, some of those had to do with, uh, state funding, some of them had to do with Medicaid reimbursements that didn't come in quite, and some of it had to do with, with, um, our tuition payments from Jamestown. And by the way, that tuition issue with Jamestown has absolutely nothing to do with the issues that Mr. Mudge and I have had back and forth about, you know, using the bond or not using the bond. It has more to do with, um, the students we expected to come and the students who did come. We were expecting 202 and we got 188. The other piece of it has to do with the fact that we projected it at a time when the actual tuition payment was not decided yet, back in, in January, after it did get decided and after we got more numbers back of the, the uniform chart of the county's data, we actually learned that our per pupil expenditures was lower than we had even thought it would be at the high school, which is generally a good thing. The problem is that the Jamestown tuition payment is a formula based on the per pupil expenditure. So, all the students who did come paid a little bit less. That's what those things had to do. Regardless of what we set the tuition payment at, if it included Mr. Mudge's concerns or not, that number would've come in lower than expected and that's, that's what occurred. Now, some years, we get lucky and we get more students coming from Jamestown or the projection comes in, uh, you know, we projected lower than what the actual, actually was and we realize some, it increased revenue, well, that we didn't expect. This time, it didn't happen. So, those things put together made for a budget deficit. Regardless of that, what, one thing that I have maintained and, um, is that, based on what we would, you know, have received advice from even Carolyn Diaz, the Chief Financial Officer, Department of Education, is that the appropriation from the town is the appropriation. It doesn't say, we'll give you $57 million and you find the other 800 on your own. It says, we understand that these are your projections about revenue and we will appropriate $58 million. Now, I think that, I know that the members of the school committee primarily would like to solve this problem using our own reserve fund. But even that is, doesn't come up to, you know, that's the root of the problem. We don't have enough money in that account right now. It's approximately $500,000 and just for the revenue number, we need $700,000. So, there's a problem right there. Uh, and what I'm hoping to do is to put together some kind of a plan with the town without lawyers to come up with a way to make this money up that would possibly tap into our reserve account, leaving some money left for emergencies and using some of the town's emergency account. That is money that we currently have and I'm hoping that we could possibly do something like that. But regardless, even if that part is not accepted by the auditor general, we would still, we have a plan and it is written down, is on the auditor general's desk as we speak, to make budget and to reduce this budget deficit protection to zero, so we actually end up in the black for this fiscal year. But obviously, that number isn't gonna have a lot of extra money in it to help us for next year. So, the, the problems that I talked about going into next year still exist. You know, it's just to how, how severe it is, how much do we have as, as a little buffer? Um, you know, the recommendations that we've received, even, you know, the town manager would recommend, um, and, and Ride would recommend, that we have roughly 2% of our budget in reserve for this kind of emergency work and that's about $1.2 million. So, obviously, that's below where we need it to be right now. And that's just another challenge. That's not even the capital reserve fund that I talked about. That's a, a separate, um, item. It's just kind of a rainy day account. When, when a, a student moves into the district and they have severe special needs that we need to take care of, to the $275,000, there's nothing you can do about it, sometimes that's the place where you go for that kind of thing. If it, if it wasn't budgeted, wasn't expected, or you have some kind of other emergency that you need to attend to, those things tend to happen, you need to be prepared. So, right now, that number's a little thin. So, but like I said, regardless, we have plans in place to, you know, uh, take care of that budget deficit issue in, in due time before the, the fiscal year ends. So, I'm, you know, I'm cautious about it, but I'm confident that we're gonna get it resolved and, and starting to look to, you know, next year's numbers and how challenging that's all gonna be.
Thank you. Do committee members have questions or, um, things they wanna bring up with Dr. Rogé? It is only 8:07 folks and this is about all we have on our agenda. So, I would, um, make it free that if committee members have time, that, um, they would like to ask questions or, um, go outside of, of making a comment for a longer period of time than I said before. before, feel free to do that now because there's plenty of time before we do any sort of citizens' comments, so.
Mr. Draper's also put together a five-year forecast in front of everyone, too, and if you would care to have any questions or, you know, I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, Mr. Draper, or just saying any questions if people have them?
It's a request from the town. It's part of their municipal budgeting process. They do a report into the state as to what they think their five-year projection is going to be. I just wanted to bring that to the committee's attention and see if there are any questions on that.
Could you remind us what paid sets on, Mr. Draper?
That's actually...
Is that just in our book, our packet?
Yeah, it's in the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not part of the budget document.
Isn't that... Oh, I'm sorry. There it is. Thanks. Does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to talk to Mr. Draper about for the five-year forecast? All right, so before we go into citizens' comments, if we'd like to go down, just down the table, and anyone who'd like to make any comments, feel free to do so. I'll actually start at this end. Mrs. Held, would you like to have anything that you'd like to say?
No, I actually, the thing about the Jamestown being lower, I was curious, too, because after seeing the deficit numbers that Dr. Ogier had posted, I was curious as to why we hadn't heard the good news in Jamestown about having all this extra money. And it turned out that there really wasn't quite as much of a discrepancy. We hadn't budgeted for the same number of students that you had. I think one thing that I don't know whether you factor in, we've gotten used to having, it's usually pretty close to 15% of our population is military families, and they're often there only for one year. And so you, we can't necessarily assume that we have, you know, it's a different crop of kids at different grade levels every year, and some of the years there are more at the high school. Last year, I think, was we had maybe double what we had the year before of military kids going to the high school, which was problematic for our budget, of course, but it's not a simple turnaround. And frankly, I did do some calling because I wanted to get why there was such a difference between what we had projected that we would be paying you and what you had projected we would be paying you. And it turns out, we had anticipated, you can speculate as to the reasons why, but we had a greater number of kids whose families chose to send them to private school than we have had in the past. So I think that was a part of it, too. So, anyway.
Mr. Buscard?
Nothing at this time.
I don't have anything more to say at this time. Mr. Well?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Alvinzado?
Adicus.
Mr. Sureshi?
Oh, thank you.
All right, so we will now go to citizens' comments. Lorena, is there anybody who's signed up for citizens' comments?
I'm just sitting here, and then four more to try to... As a given, on the three of us, that silence.
Thank you. We have two people who have signed up, but I will say, if there's anyone after these two people, they're more than welcome to come up to the mic. First person we have is Sandy Blankenship, and then after Mrs. Blankenship, we have Jay Romano.
Dr. Ogier, school committee members, my ESP colleagues, parents and other concerned North Kingstown community members. I feel it necessary, as president of the North Kingstown Education Support Professionals, to make public comment regarding Dr. Ogier's letter of January 9th that was received by all parents. First, it is true that the non-resolution of the ESP contract negotiations has affected this year's budget. However, I want the public to know that prior to the declaration of impasse to arbitration, our ESP negotiations team was negotiating in good faith with substantial monetary concessions on the table, even though we represent the lowest-paid employees of the school department. But unfortunately, a meeting of the minds did not happen for a lot of reasons. Also, the letter states that Dr. Ogier will be recommending, as he said earlier this evening, moving forward with the process of outsourcing our custodial, food service, and minibus staff. We have been and will continue to be vehemently opposed to a takeover from privatized companies. Unionism aside, it still makes more sense to keep veteran employees who are familiar with and completely dedicated to our school community, its students and educational staff, than to subject them to unfamiliar faces who have no personal ties to our community. Finally, the letter mentions cutting teachers, paraprofessionals, and clerical positions. Personnel cuts such as these will definitely directly impact all student services, as well as the daily business practices within our school buildings. North Kingstown has always taken pride in delivering the best we can to our kids. Now, it appears that we're losing our grasp on that goal due to monetary constraints. I pray a lot these days that all parties can work together to find a better way for our North Kingstown educational community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody up here said this week, "He will get looked at a little bit more." My name is Justin Romano, I'm a custodian. I had a whole bunch of notes and had a great idea of saying everything, but Mr. Ogier, I answered a lot of questions. Biggest one was $400,000 he thinks he can save. I've got to keep that figure in mind. One thing I want you to understand is, you've got 30 custodians, approximately, you know. We don't sit in front of a computer all day, we don't wear fancy suits. We go home smelling like an onion after an eight-hour shift. We work hard. I want you to look at my face, because you can't look at any of my other custodial colleagues out here, maybe there's one or two, and if there are there, step up and let them look at you. You know why you can't find them? Because they're in your buildings right now, working, sweating to prepare your buildings for the next 6:00 AM shift. So when you make all these decisions for the 10 years or 12 years I've been with you guys, it's kind of tough. 28 guys working right now, and you're going to fire them. You're not going to outsource them, you're going to fire them. I know you're going to try to save them, but I'm saying them because it's inevitable it's going to be all of us, it's going to be us. So it's not outsourcing anymore. It's, you're going to fire us if we can't find $400,000. Mrs. Blankenship represents me. She represents 200 people that are, again, your behind-the-scenes employees, the custodians and the paraprofessionals and the maintenance guys, all of those guys. So I can't understand why she and you guys, since we've been negotiating for seven months, can't come up with $400,000. I mean, I'm not a math whiz, but more than likely, that's been close enough on the table. I mean, you know, we go from a term "negotiating" to "moderating," now we're into "arbitration." Hell knows how much that cost, anyway, I don't know. I mean, why don't we just settle it and keep the people you have, tweak it a little bit? We're willing to bend over, as they say. We're willing to be making concessions, which I hate using that word. I mean, $400,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money for 200 people to come up with, negotiate under good faith that we can get another contract for another year or two or three or whatever it is. We're good people, don't fire us just because you want to save some money. Work with us. Again, the word I used, I got a lot of laughs last time, was, "Anybody can be tweaked. You guys can be tweaked, believe me. We can be tweaked." I mean, and you take cuts here, and like she said, we're the lowest guys paid. We're not making $150,000. We're not making that kind of buck, and that's part of the budget also. You know, we look at that and we kind of laugh. A lot of people making lots more money than we are, and they ain't going to get outsourced. Thanks for your time. My name is Justin Romano.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak who hasn't signed up?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Chaconi, I'm a paraprofessional. I work in Hamilton. And actually, Dr. Ogier, I didn't have time to check my email today. I was working, and I saw you and some of the congressmen and I think Mrs. Benson was there. And, you know, I got home and I read that email and I saw your proposal, and I was mad. I was really mad. And I thought, here you were in my building today, riling up my 180 kids in my lunchroom, people in costumes like the Big Apple, they're having a grand time, and it was great, the kids loved it. And then I go home and I'm like, "What? You are going to outsource the cafeteria services who you were just commending in my building? What is going on?" And then I read further, cuts to the custodians. It's not shocking, we've been talking about it. It's been on the table for years, it keeps getting brought up and brought up and brought up. And then I read on, and I was actually pleased to see the social worker situation be brought up. I actually mentioned back in October, bringing in some more school psychologists. My job, I work with behaviorally challenged kids, I work with mentally challenged kids, academically challenged kids, I work with teachers, I work with everybody. I'll give you an example of chasing a kindergartner around the building. I specifically was called to help another paraprofessional. This kid was out of control, he was unsafe. A custodian stopped the kid because the kid slammed into the custodian running down the hallway. And that closed to me and said, "Hey, what are you doing?" The kid says, "Hey, those ladies are following me. They want to leave me alone." Custodian gave that kid a job to do. "Hey, can you carry this package of soap to the boys' bathroom with me?" And he flipped back at the pair who's following him, and he said, "Yeah." That custodian, with a couple of winks from us, helped us out. We were able to get the kid back under control by carrying a package of soap. It was amazing. It was amazing. So when I see that you want to cut paraprofessionals, I'm like, okay, you know. But then I read on and I say, "Hmm, you want to increase the services provided to kids who are behind in math and reading." I do that, too. When kids are brought in for RTIs, I work with four kids just in the classroom I'm assigned to, not including kids in other classes in other grades levels, grade levels. That's what we do. I have a pinpoint math group, they're RTI, they don't qualify for an IEP, they don't qualify for time with the resource teacher. So we have Mrs. Em Schuyler come in, she gives them a practice test, pre-test, we figure out what they need. I do that job. I help those kids. I also go to a math class for an hour a day. We break into smaller groups, I work in the low-level math group, and after the teacher does her instruction, I take a little subset off to the side. So I understand you need teachers to get the basic information out there, but paraprofessionals reteach what's already been learned, and we're the people backing up what the teachers have done. We're important, don't cut us.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I'd just like to, I appreciate you coming to the mic, I really do. I just want to point something out, though. You mentioned that I want to cut paraprofessionals. I don't want to cut anything. That is not the word I'm using. I just don't know other ways, and I'm inviting people to tell me, what are the other ways that we get to a balanced budget, because I'm just not seeing it. And I agree, the paraprofessionals in our buildings are vitally important. As a matter of fact, I mentioned earlier that I've recommended the addition of some at the beginning of this school year, even when they were not budgeted, even knowing that we were going to have these problems coming at us. So I'm not sure where to find those people who are somehow not needed. They're needed. I agree with you, wholeheartedly, I agree with you. And I also want you to know that it is by no means simply something where I'm picking on one group over another. There are, I'm looking at teachers, I'm looking at people who do all kinds of work. So this isn't easy for me, I know it isn't easy for the members of our community and you as well, and I appreciate your comments, but I just wanted to be clear about that point. I don't want to do any of this. Thank you.
Hi, Joy Arnold, I'm a library and media specialist at the high school. I'm sure I'll be addressing you again at some point, but, and so I was going to save this comment till later, but since it was on my mind and it was something that you brought up, Dr. Ogier. You talked about the BEP and you specifically used the librarians as that example. When the BEP was rewritten, and I think that was just a couple of years ago, they did take all of the staffing requirements out. I remember it went from a very large document to a much smaller document because of a lot of that stuff. And I went to all of those meetings and spoke at those meetings as well. One of the things that taking out those staffing requirements did was, and I'm not sure they looked at what's going on with education, and I know they must have, but looked at what's going on with education today, and I can only really speak for the library, so that's what I'll do. When you look at the 1960s something, when the BEP, I think, was originally written, the idea of what a librarian was and what a librarian did was probably very much checking books in and out. I know even when I speak to people today and I talk about what I do in the library and the amount that I teach, people are kind of shocked, they're like, "Really? My librarian didn't do that when I was in school." So the idea of what a librarian is, has changed. So in the 1960s, when they probably mainly checked out books, we were required to have one per thousand, or generally in a high school this big, you would have at least two librarians. Now, when we are in the information age, and even the NEASC standards that Dr. Kenworthy showed us at the faculty meeting, talked about the research and the information and evaluating and assessing and all this being, there was like seven standards, I think, on the first page that he showed us, that all dealt with that. And now the BEP doesn't require the staffing. So I think it's interesting that they took out the staffing now, and we're kind of moving forward, and we probably need more staff to cover the amount of students and the amount of teaching that takes place when, before, when it wasn't quite that way, we didn't, you know, it was required, now it's not mandated. So I didn't, I don't know what is going on exactly with the auditor and what they're looking at. I'll be interested to see what happens with that, because when I meet people today, and just from my own position, and I can only talk about that, they're confused really by what I do and don't really think of me as a teacher. I have people in my own building that don't really understand that exactly. So it's important to me to pass on to you all making these decisions, that what I do is entirely different than what a librarian did when we were all in school. And I don't, the BEP, I don't think today reflects that change, because it did take out those requirements by saying you need to provide adequate library services, and I believe that's pretty much exactly what it says. And as you said, the interpretation can be very wide. But if you look at two years ago, it required two people. Today, it doesn't require a mandate, any, and I don't understand how that happened exactly. So I think it's important that we all understand what the people in these positions really do. It's my hope going forward, because I know we looked at cutting library services last year, to be able to invite yourself, I was hoping, Dr. Humbert, and maybe even some of the school committee members, you can come in and actually see what we do as far as the classes that we cover and the teaching that we do, because I think it would be different than what you remember from when you were in school. So I'm sure I'll be talking to you about it again in the future, but as you brought that up, I wanted to say it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there is no one else for citizens' comments...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.